Hey Carrie, I noticed that the January 30th meeting is still on the website. Okay, it can't get just deleted, should be. Okay, alright, well, yeah. Yeah, we should do it. Okay, yeah, because otherwise people might think it's still happening.
Yeah.
And call for order, our regular city council meeting for January 23rd, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, welcome all. Roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
I'm present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Belloc.
Present.
Councilmember Nuzaro.
Present.
Councilmember Labar.
Present.
Councilmember Postuma.
Present.
And I do have a request to excuse Councilwoman Teresa Overhauser for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to second to excuse Councilmember Overhauser, all in favor say aye. Excused then, let's move on to citizen comments, this is an opportunity for the public to comment to our city council. I did have Corinna Donnerberg signed up, Corinna. As always, please state your name and your address for the record, and this is in regards to the ASME labor contract.
My name is Corinna Donnerberg and I live in Cheney. I was very disappointed to hear the anti-labor perspectives expressed by councilmembers at the January 9th meeting with respect to the city calendar and the addition of the Juneteenth holiday. Firstly, I do want to note that I am really thankful that Cheney is recognizing this holiday in a city where 100% of the leadership appears to be white even though only 70% of the population is. I think it would be a pretty bad look for us not to have adopted this holiday. But while I appreciate the focus on good stewardship of resources and would love to see this kind of sustained scrutiny and inquiry when it comes to, for example, police staffing and overtime spending, I believe the concern is misplaced in this instance. What does the city get in exchange when employees get one additional day per year as a paid holiday? They get the labor of city employees without which the city would not and could not function. Research has repeatedly shown the value of increased time off and increased work-life balance in terms of employee satisfaction, productivity, and retention. Just like the city must keep pace with prevailing wages if they would like to recruit and retain qualified employees, so too the city must keep pace with prevailing these standards. In the time that I have been attending city council meetings, I have heard councilmembers praise city employees over and over for their skills, talent, dedication, hard work, and accomplishments. This praise is well deserved, so why the opposition to providing one additional paid holiday? While the most visible city employees are earning more competitive salaries, as the salary schedule shows, folks working in the municipal courts and then the AFS CME classifications are mostly in the $40,000, $50,000, and $60,000 a year range, which is not a family wage in 2024. Am I very repeating that the median household income in Cheney, $45,000 as of $45,000 a year as of the most recent census? The people of Cheney are by and large workers, and we resent the implication that giving workers more time off is. I hope the council reconsider's the opposition to adding this holiday and votes to approve it.
Thank you Corinna. I don't have anybody else that signed up, but I do want to offer it out to the crowd here if anybody wishes to comment to our city council. And also for those joining us virtually. Anybody wish to comment to our council? Okay, saying none, thank you Corinna for your time. Let's move on to the minutes from our January 9th regular city council meeting. Had an opportunity to review those minutes unless there's any corrections to those that accept a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, I have a motion to second to approve our January 9th regular city council meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, our minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll, we have vouchers for 2023 and vouchers for 2024, and I think we're going to do those separately, is that right?
That's fine, yes, thank you mayor.
Okay.
2023 total is $1,189,437.53. I have a small change to the 2024 total, it is listed at $741,316.2. There was a manual check had to be issued for $3,811.50, so the total actually to be approved is $744,843.12.
Okay, thank you Cindy.
Your honor, the finance committee met on these expenditures earlier this evening, and I would make a motion to approve the 2023 voucher total amount as provided by Cindy.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve our 2023 vouchers as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, 2023 vouchers are approved.
And for the 2024, I would move to approve the amount as corrected by Cindy Niemeyer in the amount stated.
Okay, second.
Thank you, I have a motion to second to approve the 2024 vouchers as corrected, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, vouchers for 2023 and 2024 approved, we did not have any claims or damages thankfully. You can see the small contract there for one of our summer contract bans. We don't have any information items or appointments, but we do have some action items, so let's just move right into this and I'd like to invite Craig up here for resolution F222, this is the interlocal, I'm sorry, interlocal agreement with Spokane County for commute trip reduction, and I see you have a guest with you.
Good evening council members and mayor. If you don't know, I'm the accounting manager, but I'm also the employee transportation coordinator, ETC short. And basically what you have in front of you is an updated intergovernmental agreement CTR services provided. There's not much changes in that, if you notice, really there's a dollar amount change and just the RCW numbers have been updated. On that's the same we've done for years, so. And with that, I do have Leanne Yamamoto is our guest speaker tonight, and she's the TDM manager for the Spokane County CTR office. And she's got a pretty quick PowerPoint to go over what the program does. So after that, we'll answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Craig. Thanks for being here, welcome, appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me. Thank you again for having me, I really appreciated it, and thank you Craig. Action, I just wanted to give you an overview of the commuter production law and the commute smart program as a whole. And then also just brief you on the intergovernmental agreement between Spokane County and the city of Cheney. So as you see, I do work in the office of Commute Smart Northwest, it is part of Spokane County. We work with businesses to help them promote carpooling, riding the bus, biking, walking, teleworking, compressing work schedules with their employees to help us reduce traffic congestion in Spokane County, reduce fuel consumption, and also help our air quality as well. See. So with that, just as a small overview, there is a law in the state of Washington, it is the commuter production law. It was passed in 1991 and implemented in 1993 by our office, and it was part of the Clean Air Act as well. So who's affected by the CTR law, I know we have some new council members, so hopefully this will help you understand the CTR law. Counties within the urban growth areas, so Spokane County is one of those, and within those urban growth areas, employers with over 100 employees that start their workday between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. And then also work more than 34 hour, 35 hours a week, sorry about that. It applies to all public and private employers, and then also applies to the local jurisdictions as well. So again, Spokane County's been the lead agency since 1993, it is a regional program that we've been implementing. And we work with all the following jurisdictions, Arid Heights, Cheney, Liberty Lake, Medical Lake, again making it a regional program. And Cheney has three work sites within your guys' area that are affected by that law as well. Okay, so requirements for administering the CTR law and the funding that goes along with that, we do administer CTR surveys that is required by the ordinances and the law to all of the employers that are affected by the law, and again, we have 96 total. We also review their annual reports as well. We provide the required training to the employee transportation coordinators from all 96 work sites as well, we provide support and guidance just to help all of those work sites be successful in promoting those commute options to their employees. And then also if we have new work sites come on board, we onboard them and help them set up their new programs as well. I did want to mention in 2024, we will be working on a new CTR plan, it is in line with the ordinance here in the city of Cheney. And we need to update that for the 2529, so that'll be coming your way here shortly. Working with you, we do have goals with the law for all of the employers and jurisdiction goals too, so those will be updated in that CTR plan. And so then, just to move forward with the goals, currently there's a 6% increase in non-drive-alone rate for fine reach, and again, we measure those every two years with the surveys that we conduct. Also, we try and reduce the reduction in vehicle miles traveled, which also correlates to reducing the air pollution in Spokane County too. So it has lots of benefits, the program, the commute smart program, it's a model for public and private partnerships, and again, we've worked really closely with all 96 of those employers, helping them develop their programs, so it is really a great program. Low-cost congestion management tool, of course, it helps to reduce the traffic on the roads and then reduces parking constraints, adds foot traffic for different businesses because we're removing public cars off the roads and the parking as well, and then of course, reducing air pollution. So again, I'm here tonight because we have an intergovernmental agreement, we get funding through WashDOT, it is a two-year agreement from July 2023 through June 25. The funding for Spokane County is $647,100, Cheney's allocation for that CTR information is $1,222. You guys do have three work sites, city of Cheney, Eastern Washington University, and then Trans Systems Incorporated are the three. So just wanted to relay some of our impact that we have on the community because I think it's substantial. We do remove over 8,300 trips off our roadways each day. Over 141,000 miles not driven on our roadways within Spokane County, which amounts to about 5.7 trips around the world each day, so it's really impactful, over 2.1 million trips a year and over 36.6 million miles reduced in a year as well. So working with these businesses, it is a really positive impact, I think, for our community and our environment as well. So I did want to mention, we do have our awards event coming up, hopefully you did get your invitations, hopefully you can all come as well. It is February 8th from 11:30 to 1, it's a luncheon at the Grand Hotel in downtown Spokane. I know the city of Cheney is receiving an award, many of you will be there to accept the award as well. And then also I did want to mention that Craig Wall has been our ETC for five years, and so he's going to be getting recognized at the event as well, so we really appreciate everything he's done and the great job that he's done over the last 25 years as well, so that'll be fun to recognize Craig there. I didn't put it on the slide, but I also wanted to mention because Craig is a huge supporter, he volunteers too, but we also have another upcoming event, which is the Bike Swap, I'm sure you've probably heard of it, great community event, it is on April 20th. So, and that our program helps to lead those efforts with that community event too, but it also helps promote biking too amongst the employers that are in the program. So with that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you Leanne, anybody have any questions, go ahead Paul.
Correct me Craig, you've been our only CTR coordinator, is that correct?
No.
I thought you started.
No, I took the word from Glenn.
Okay.
100 years ago.
Well, saying it's 25 years ago, I bet.
1998, because I've been, I was new with Craig as well when I started.
But you've been doing it for longer than 25 years, just have the only 25-year award right now. Okay.
Yeah.
Craig does that, that's an addition to his other duties and responsibilities, so I thank Craig for all this work on that, and just as another comment, if we don't go with interlocal with the county, then we have to do it ourselves. And it's a lot more expensive and it's a lot more cost-effective, you'll see a lot of these come up where we want to stay with interlocal and pool our resources and comply with the state law and have a great program that the county gives. Thank you.
Anybody else, questions, comments? Thank you Leanne for your time, appreciate it, and Craig, thank you very much for your service, and we'll see you at the war ceremony.
Yes.
I will. Okay, that brings us to action on F222.
We have to approve the resolution first.
What's that?
Your honor, I would make a motion that we approve resolution F222.
So that's it.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve resolution F222, or interlocal, sorry, interlocal agreement with Spokane County for commute trip reduction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, resolution F222 passes. Mark, resolution F221, this is the ASME C labor agreement.
Okay, so at the last council meeting, I presented the draft ASME 2024, 2026 contract. You directed me to go back to the bargaining table to talk about a couple issues, one of which was the addition of Juneteenth as well as the number of floating holidays. You made particular mention of the fact that it is extremely important for the city to achieve that well-city award, and it was your preference that, you know, one of those floating holidays would be earned through participation in wellness events if we're going to grant the Juneteenth floating holiday. So went back to the table, the discussion with the bargaining team from the ASME C went as follows. They were of the opinion that they would rather just get the two floating holidays with no strings attached and give up Juneteenth. So I said okay. Those two holidays were in the existing contract that expired on December 31st of 2023. So that is the contract that I'm bringing back to you tonight, just kind of reverting back. There was one other section where we added on the re-opener to discuss, you know, wages and benefits and things. We did add some language in there that you could see in green text in the packet that you were given with the contract in. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions or have a conversation about the contract.
Thanks Mark, questions for Mark?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it possible to go back though and add Juneteenth in instead of removing that as a holiday? Because it's a federal holiday, Washington's been observing it since like 2007, and kind of seems ridiculous to make that swap when they seem like they're not really equivalent sort of holidays. Okay.
Direct me to go back.
Thank you. I would like you to go back and, well, ideally with the support of my fellow council members to go back and readdress that, because I do agree with, it's not just Corinna, I've heard from several constituents similar sort of sentiments that it just seems like it's not really an issue that we should be debating on that merit, so, thank you.
Other questions, go ahead.
I have a question just in regards, do you know why they, like, what the pushback is in becoming a well?
They just did not want, their members, according to the people at the bargaining table, did not want to commit to participating in all the wellness events or activities that we would need them to participate in to achieve, you know, enough to get that extra floating holiday. So they just, they just wanted to freebies, basically.
Okay.
I have another question though, real quick.
Yeah.
Speaking of extra holidays, so when I was reading through the text, I saw that there was an asterisk next to the floating holidays, and it mentioned an additional floating holiday up to the discretion of the department.
Yeah.
Would that equate to like effectively a third floating holiday?
Yeah, just for their, just for their union, this, you know, the two that we're talking about is pretty much citywide, everybody gets those.
Okay.
Then we have some little one-offs that they can earn through years of service and things, and some of the other contracts that are out there.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
Go ahead Paul.
Thank you honor. Yeah. I'm in agreement. Well, not with this version that's being brought forward, I'll just be real clear, I will not support a collective bargaining agreement that does not include Juneteenth as a holiday as it was initially. That's just to come back and blame us. But secondly, and the reason we discussed the option then of the second floating holiday, which is not all that common, I mean, we're pretty generous with that, and I know, I think some of the history, some, for some reason it got bargained in that they got a day off on their birthday. Then that got converted to just a general floating, and everyone wants that because then he can now the thing with floating holidays, they don't carry over. So a lot of times they'll use them early on and then vacation and stuff. So a lot of times they'll use them early on and then vacation and stuff later. So that's all nice and fine. But the reason we were, I was suggesting we tie it to the wellness in that in order for us to get a discount on our health benefits, the premium is that we pay for all the employees. If we meet the qualifications and the associate Association of Washington Cities, which we belong to, and then they have an employee benefit trust, where we're in a pool that we join that pool and we're self-insured for for medical benefits for our employees. And what AWC has done over the years is they've found that if you have a wellness program, it does have a positive effect on the well-being of employee and on our premiums. The reason I know this is I sit on the board. When you just had a report from the board and and they're saying, because of the success of our well-city program, that means each city, X amount of employees have to meet the criteria for being a well-employed. And we've always met that because of the goodness of, what is it, Kerry? Half of our employees or three-fourths?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent have to do that. So we rely on the on the good graces of fifty percent of employees to fill out the paperwork and try to be a well-employed. And in such, then everybody benefits. They get a two percent discount on what they pay in their portion, and the city gets a two percent. I don't know what the, for the total city, we're in was twenty thousand a year or something to that effect. I mean, we're in, that's what, so all I'm suggesting here is the world, or at least the United States and cities and local government, is going to go to Juneteenth as they should. I think that should be put back in as a holiday. Number two, as we noted, when that's a fifty-three thousand dollar a year hit for for all the cities employee take a day on. I'm just suggesting that for that second floater, we add an asterisk that you can have that floater if you meet the requirements for a well, well-city participant. And in doing so, I think it would help us probably meet meet the fifty percent without browbeating, you know, our employees that do do that and maybe encourage some of those that haven't before to do so. Then they can earn their their extra floating holiday. I there's no harm, I think, that's being done. And we have the option and now I'll make a motion that affect after we get done discussing that. To defer this again with what Mark is gleaning from us that you need a little more time to go back to the bargaining table and get Juneteenth put back in and continue the discussion about earning their second floating holiday and help us reach our goal of fifty percent. Thank you, Honor.
Thanks.
If, just real quick. But if they have a potential third floating holiday, wasn't that still going to cost the same amount to the city?
We've we've had it for years.
Okay, well, then, I'm not sure.
I, what what Paul's talking about is truly getting some some buy-in, you know, because this well-city, it means a lot to to us financially. It means a lot to the employees.
And we should be encouraging everybody to participate.
Absolutely. And and I can tell you, because I I had to deal with it for years, Kerry now is the chair of the Wellness Committee. It is somewhat difficult to get participation and get to that fifty percent level. I mean, it's it's a struggle. I mean, it it takes, Paul said browbeating, it's pretty close to that.
Well, then, would we hold our non-union employees to that same standard?
That that's the direction that I'm hearing councils, you know, tell me. You know, we we would hold all of our city employees to that. We'd have to negotiate that, of course, you know, in the existing collective bargaining agreements. But, you know, it it certainly would lend itself to, you know, us achieving the award and having people that are, you know, better off health-wise.
Because I could see that additional third one being a good swap for that. I mean, because the county gives you two floating holidays as well. There are other.
I don't think it matters where it resides in the contract, which ones attached to it. It's just one of one of your floating holidays you have to earn.
This is another, I'm sorry. I guess what's so pivotal right now, this is the first collective bargaining agreement for this to come forward. If we don't have that in, or the others are not going to either. So this one will set the bar. So if we hold in that we want Juneteenth and then we want to be able to earn the second floater as a wellness incentive, then I think it'll be easier to bargain for the other ones to do the same. If not, then they do what's called a me-too. Well, I want what the others have for us. So that's why this one's so pivotal, that it's the first one coming before us. I think this is the one that will set the the bar for the others.
So then, could we use that additional third possible one as their incentivized floating holiday instead of messing with the few?
Doesn't matter where it resides, you know, to be honest.
Okay.
In which part of the language.
It would just be one of the floating holidays.
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah.
So I just want, I'm curious to clarify with the whole well-city, because I fully support that that's the direction that should we should head. Um, but is it where they have to give up other time off in order to qualify? Or is there stuff they can do during their time?
There's absolutely stuff they can do during work.
Okay.
In fact, most of our activities are during work time.
Okay.
I'll tell you, the easiest way to earn, you know, the point value to to kind of cross that threshold is fill out a survey that takes twelve minutes.
Okay.
The health survey.
Okay. And we currently have fifty percent.
We don't right now, because new year just started. So we so we did last year.
Okay.
Um, how many do you know offhand? How many, what percent we had?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight? Yeah, so, yeah.
It's minimal stuff.
It's very minimal. I mean, okay, you can, employees can get points for things like going to the doctor to get a checkup, going to the dentist. You can watch a video. I mean, it's it's really, it's not a heavy lift at all.
We have about ninety-two cities.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. How many are represented by this?
Twenty-nine. Or is it twenty-seven, twenty-nine? Yeah, so this is by far the biggest of the.
Okay, great questions. Good comment.
There are no others. If there's other questions or discussion, I would make the motion to defer resolution F two-two-one. Bill Future City Council Meeting.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second to defer resolution F two-two-one, the labor agreement with ASMEC. And then we have our marching orders to go forward and renegotiate based on the discussion we passed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Mark. We'll defer resolution F two-two-one, which in turn cancels out our ordinance for the evening, so we have that at the end.
Yeah, we'll defer.
Excuse me.
Could you do me a favor? Can you move the podium to your left a little bit, because the presenter is right behind the pole for me?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Abelman, let's move on to a resolution F two-two-three. This is the twenty-twenty-four Transportation Improvement Board Elm Street Preservation Project Consultant Agreement.
Yeah, we're kind of flip-flopped here, but the the other resolution won't make sense. But the twenty-twenty-four Elm Street Preservation Project includes Elm Street from Washington all the way down to North Six. We applied for a TIB grant matter of years of twenty-twenty-three, worked with the TIB engineer. This is a unique one. This is a preservation project, but we don't have the proper sidewalk. So we're going to be doing a little bit more creative in pedestrian. So they went back to the table. Original grant was about one point two million. They suggested to redesign it a little bit different and submit a revision grant of just over two million total projects. With that, I have an agreement with for the in for the preliminary engineer meeting. Answer any questions?
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd? I just had a, I had one question or comment, I guess, is when these projects are happening, particularly on Elm, when we've got new STA shelters in place, we're coordinating with all those involved.
Yeah.
Parametrically coordinated with STA. Because they've got some brand-new, brand-new shelters.
In fact, STA was very supportive of this.
Yeah.
I think when we we come together and we're talking about more pedestrian-friendly site, we'll have them involved.
I knew the answer, just for the for the sake of our council. Thank you. Any questions for Todd on this agreement?
Your Honor, if I may.
All right, please.
To the Transportation Improvement Board, they're pretty scripted in these agreements and follow what, we get their money if we follow their requirements, and that's pretty much what we're doing here. It's a great program. I worry someday it's gonna, we're gonna run out. It's one of about the only two sources we have for external funding for our arterial streets. So this is a administrative type manner.
And we've been very fortunate in getting grant funding several years in a row for different areas of the city. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Your Honor, if there's no further questions or comments, I move for approval of F two-two-three.
Second. Second, you have a motion, a second to approve resolution F two-two-three, the consultant agreement for the TIB for Elm Street Preservation. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Todd. Resolution F two-two-three passes, which brings us to F two-two-four, and this is the funding agreement for that same project.
This is funding agreement, yes. We were rewarded TIB funding, basically in the amount of one million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand ten percent match to it. That project total is two thousand, two million, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. That is the focus on project, but now, of course, that can kind of change. Yeah, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this is a, the agreement is a fuel tax, it can might be using, but all it is is a, that is where the funding is coming from. And if I pave a different street or something, they they have the right to.
Thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd? Comments? Nope. Get some more money.
Do you have a question or?
No.
I was going to motion.
You got it.
Hit it.
Go for it.
Sorry. If there are no further questions or comments, I motion to approve resolution F two-two-four.
Second. Thank you. A motion, a second to prove it, resolution F two-two-four, the TIB funding agreement for the Elm Street Preservation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Todd. F two-two-four passes. Mr. Marx, resolution F two-two-five, this is the twenty-twenty-four wood pole purchase agreement.
You can counsel, seeking approval to like department, approximately a hundred of them. We went out to bid, we had three bidders, lowest one one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars plus tax, which which around one hundred and forty-six thousand. Actually, started this process back and it's a slide chain problems are happening here. Had a budgeted hundred thousand dollars last year, only got one response and it was about one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Normally paying about a hundred, so seventy-two thousand increase, just didn't want to pull the trigger on it. So we went out and asked for more quotes to try to meet the end-of-year budget, didn't receive any. So in December, went out for bid. So there is no, there was not a hundred thousand budget this year, twenty-twenty-four for this, so that in my mind, it carries over, but it's still going to have to make up the hundred thousand or deficit on that budget.
Yes, you'll need a budget.
Budget.
Fill your eyes in. So the circumstances brought us this situation, and like I said, going red forest is the lowest bidder. It'll take about twenty-one weeks is their estimated delivery. So I think a little foreshadowing, probably April, May, I may be coming back again to start this process. If it's going to take five to six months to get these poles, I'm going to be out ahead of that. And then also, we'll have the conversation about transformers, because we're still waiting on transformers. We think sixteen, eighteen months ago. They keep shifting down the road to a March delivery date. They really have to be six to two years out supply order.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve on poll replacement plan here? Go ahead, Paul.
Your Honor, we discussed this at the Public Works Committee meeting and noted with Steve that the long time in order to receive the polls, we recommend, we saved just under thirty grand from the quote to go under the bid. So, yes, it's not, it wasn't a loss for that. But given the the timeline and everything, I would make the motion to approve resolution F dash two-two-five. Second.
Thank you. I have motion, a second to approve resolution F two-two-five, the wood pole purchase contract. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Steve. Resolution F two-two-five passes. Chief Bectall, resolution F two-two-six, purchase of two police vehicles as budgeted.
Council members, the reason I'm here tonight is I'm going to ask you for some permission to buy two authorized in the budget. These two police vehicles are going to be the twenty-twenty-three models. Shout to our our prior vendor and found out that the twenty-twenty-four start gearing up to produce the twenty-twenty-five models, making the twenty-twenty-four. We wouldn't even be able to put an order in until probably wouldn't take delivery of the cars until we but we learned that Spokane County Sheriff's Office had ten vehicles. They made, they only, they were only able to purchase six, so F four, two were picked up by another agency. And there's still two in place. These are twenty-twenty-three vehicles. I asked Mr. Capon to to review the exceptions to the state bid process. And he would by the legal analysis that would indicate that this was, this particular thing fit in a an exception to the normal bidding process under the special market conditions. The twenty-twenty-four's aren't going to be available, twenty-twenty-five's are going to be more expensive. We could pick these two cars up at a considerably less price than they're going to. Asking is for permission to purchase those two cars.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief? Kind of got lucky on this one, finding these two cars, for sure.
What, it's going to be looked a little different and have two sheriff cars driving around.
Oh, one's one's black and one's white.
Oh, okay.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Yeah. Question. Mayor, we we talked about this, the Safety Subcommittee meeting felt like it was a good idea. It saves the city money, because we're buying cars at a cheaper rate and we get them when we need them. We've already been waiting for them. So we felt like it was a good idea, just to let the council know. So if there's no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve resolution F dash two-two-six.
Thank you. That was us. Go ahead. Second.
Oh, second.
Yeah. I have a motion, a second to approve resolution F two-two-six, purchase of two police vehicles. Final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chief. Resolution F two-two-six passes. Okay, our next action item will be an executive session, and Mark, are we looking at fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
So I'm going to read this executive, we're going to go into an executive session as per RCW four-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero-one-G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. And as soon as we get everything set up on virtually, I think we're only going to need just counsel, Mark, Mr. Capon, Cindy, and Kerry, I guess we can keep
Yeah, Kerry.
Getting Kerry and everybody else, if we could leave, and I will give a time rather than
They're going to come in just rest of the night.
Just just for the end.
It's for coming. The freshmen are in the lobby.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we are out of executive session, back in open open public meeting. Our last action item, we are not going to do, which brings us to staff reports. Mark, anything to?
Just a couple of quick ones, just want to say thanks to all the city employees dealing with the weather over the last couple of weeks, between the light crew, street crew, you know, water department, everybody out there attending to citizens' needs. Special thanks to Cindy for all of her efforts, just kind of wrapping. Special thanks to, to Cindy for all her efforts, um, just kind of wrapping up the year and stuff. That is not an easy task. And, um, she's doing a wonderful job of building a street there. So with that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking for warmer temperatures. Me personally, and I know some of you snow or snow skiers might, might object to that, but, uh, I'm, I'm looking for better. Thanks, Mary.
Uh, mine is, uh, session, the legislative session is hot and heavy right now. There's a lot going on, a lot of bills being, um, submitted both from the Senate and the House. So I know Mark emailed, I think, a list of everything that's being talked about. So we'll keep an eye on the things that affect Genie directly.
Yeah, and if there's something that piques your interest or you want a status or, you know, uh, anything, just let me know. And I'll talk to Deborah. She's tuned in, locked in over there. So she'll, she'll give us a, an update on, on where a bill might be or maybe some potential amendments or something. There'll be a talk about behind the scenes.
And there are several out there that, that will affect the city of Genie. So keep an eye on those. Okay, council reports. Paul?
Thanks. Your Honor, that's a good segue because kind of where I read that was from a, one of the legislators. It was almost like there's, is a foregone conclusion, the legislature is going to be into our local planning, like big time.
Yep.
I mean, before, I mean, there was such pushback, they rarely even brought it up. Now it's like they're going to do it and that's it. And I would really hope that, uh, whatever, if we can be notified to, I guess, testify against some of this where, I mean, one size all fits all thing is for local land use planning just to me does not work. And for whatever reason, they're just heck bent on doing that. But so if you, if you get anything, I'd certainly be interested.
We, we did have Brett Lucas testify on, on one of the bills, uh, not too long ago. And, and any opportunity that Dedmore makes us aware of, I'll let you know.
And then, and then lastly, at the last council meeting, I had a shout out for light department director, you know, one. No outages and everything, and no more got home and the doggone lights went out. Okay, that's all I needed to hear. I knew it wasn't us. It was somebody else. So I'll wait until the next council meeting before I do shout out. Thanks, Andy House. That's all I have.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, I just wanted to say you guys are doing a fantastic job of plowing and keeping the sidewalks clear. Um, I have been commuting via foot the last few days, back and forth to Eastern and much better than it's been in the past. So I think you guys are doing a fantastic job with that and I really appreciate it. I'm sure everybody else does too.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for having me.
What?
Yeah, same for me. Just great job, street department. And, uh, I think it's been really good and that's been good. And I also want to give a shout out to the Eastern Watch University Meds and Wims basketball teams who are both five and O in the big sky. Keep it up. It's great to have some winning program and, um, that's, they're fun to watch. If you have not watched one of the boys or girls games, they are fun to watch. I think they could give the Zags a run for their money right now. So that'd be good.
I agree.
So, uh, thanks, everybody.
Okay, good. Any last words of wisdom?
Move to here.
Second, motion a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your service.